Genuinely scheduled council meeting here in the council chambers. This is a public meeting, open to the public, and we are practicing social distancing. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag—
To the flag of the United States of—
—of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Diane Pappan?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Gothel?
Now is the time for the consent calendar. Would you please read the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item 1, San Mateo Public Library Foundation Operating Lease Amendment. Item 2, Library Cafe Property Lease Amendment. Item 3, California Transportation Commission Local Streets and Roads SB 1 Funding Project List for Fiscal Year 2020-21. Item 4, School Crossing Guard Fiscal Year 2021 Agreement as amended in front of you on the dais. Item number 5, San Mateo Safety Management Association Memorandum of Understanding Amendment. Item number 6, Classification Updates Department of Public Works Information Technology and Parks and Recreation as amended. And item number 7, the City Council Strategic Plan Adoption as amended.
That is the consent agenda. Is there any member of the council that would like to remove an item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any member of the public who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. At this time, now is the time for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to comment on something that is not on the agenda may speak at this time. Public comment will be limited to 15 minutes. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. We have a number of presentations. I'm going to turn it over to—actually, should we make a note of the fact that we have had an item that was moved to a future agenda?
Yes, in order to facilitate this meeting and conduct only business that we think is critical to get finished at this meeting, we've taken one item off of our study session agenda, which was an update on the traffic action plans, and we're going to move that to a future agenda. And we moved the other study session item, the revenue enhancement item, into the main agenda tonight.
Perfect. So our agenda has been amended, and the most recent copy is on the website. So we'll start with the presentation on the first public hearing with Brad Underwood. Thank you, Brad.
Unlike what it says on the slide, I am not Sue Ellen Atkinson, although she might be easier on the eyes for you. I'm Brad Underwood, the Public Works Director, here to talk to you tonight about the parking demand and objective standards ordinance introduction. So we'll talk about the Central Parking Improvement District, the requirements that are in that area right now, the objective standards that we want to put before you for parking in lieu review, and the proposed ordinance, and the next steps. So, and the municipal code sets parking requirements based on land use within the Central Parking Improvement District. That is done by use type, in other words, whether it's housing or commercial or whatnot, and that's set by, like, per thousand square feet of that type of use. In other words, there would be 1.5 spaces per thousand, for instance. So we received some recent comment, the council has, about how maybe the demand that we have attributed to certain uses exceeds the actual demand, so—for a particular project site. So we are trying to take that into account into our recommendations tonight. So the parking requirements—you've asked the staff to go do a comprehensive parking study to evaluate the parking requirements we have had in place for some time. Staff will begin working on that, and that'll come to you at a later date, which would be kind of the final resolution of that. So in the interim, we would like to do—make some changes to the ordinance. And one of the first changes would be to allow for developers to do a parking demand study. Now, that study would be city-controlled. In other words, we'd oversee the study, we'd hire the consultant to do that study, but the developer would pay for that study. So in that study, they would evaluate similar-type projects, assess the parking demand of those similar-type projects, and then utilize that information to estimate parking demand for any specific project. So in looking at objective standards, the development projects now can pay parking in lieu instead of providing parking on-site, and these requests are individually analyzed. So there's not really a consistent way that we're analyzing those, so staff felt that it was important to try to put together some set standards and guidelines for us to evaluate these. So that would help us in the review process for us going forward. This slide shows the Central Parking Improvement District, and in this district, developers now currently can opt to pay for the parking in lieu fee instead of any onsite parking. And then within that Central Parking Improvement District is the limited parking zone. So in this zone, we limit—or actually, we do not allow any additional curb cuts that are always already there because we're trying to prioritize pedestrian access in the area. We put a cap on the number of spaces any particular project can have on their site, and the use of parking in lieu in this area for payment is much greater due to these onsite So remembering that orange map just I showed you before, within the limited parking zone, we are—we'd like to set forward that they may be able to pay for parking in lieu for any required parking not provided on the site. So that will still remain in place for those projects within the limited parking zone. Again, they'd be able to do that study, that parking study, if they wished as well. Now, outside the limited parking zone, in the broader area, the blue area, we would want to require projects to provide a minimum of 25% parking onsite. And then if they—if—they—under certain circumstances, though, we'd want to make them provide 50% of the required parking in these instances. So if the parking—off-street parking is very impacted, in other words, within a quarter a mile, 85% of the peak hours, parking is utilized within that area, we'd want them to provide 50% of parking onsite because that area is already impacted. We'd also want to look at, are they adjacent to residential areas? As you know, we have a great deal of interest in our residential parking permit program, and so we would want to have the developer provide ample parking so that they reduce the impact to the residential areas. So the next steps, based on your conversations tonight with us, we could revise the ordinance tonight to meet whatever needs you might have. We would have the second reading on April 6th, and the ordinance would then take effect about 30 days following the second reading, which lines up well, if you recall, with the implementation of the new parking fee that you initiated previously. And then we'll begin the process of the comprehensive parking study to move forward with that, and then, once that is completed, we'll come back with a more permanent change, the ordinance, so that we could address these issues going forward. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brad. Can you clarify one more time, the action that you're requesting from us tonight is Thank you.
You bet.
Questions at this time? Diane, you have questions?
I have a question. What is adjacent to residential areas? Does it have to actually abut? I mean, do you know, touch?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I just have one more question, if I may. And it is either/or, or both of those on the bottom, the bottom bullet points.
I think they book—it's for both of them. So both would apply to a project.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I was wondering about the objective standards and whether or not they will be based on lot size, if that will be factored in at all?
That is not currently in there, but it's something we could consider to make an adjustment. If I may, that kind of leads me into another option we've considered because we know you've heard from potentially one property owner. Another option to that would be to grandfather projects in with a submitted planning application right now, which that project has currently submitted a planning application.
And then my other question was, what was the basis for determining 25% and 50%?
Well, one of the considerations is we're trying to allow developers as much flexibility as possible in developing their property, but also provide some type of adequate parking, recognizing the limitations that we have in the area of the parking—central parking district.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Just one question. Do you have any idea what—the see, how do I want to phrase this? So if the projects must provide a minimum of 25% required parking on-site, and then a minimum of 50 required on-site if, and then the two conditions, do we know, like, what percentage fulfill those conditions roughly?
No, it'd be a case-by-case basis, and we'd have to analyze it. It's hard to say which—what properties are going to be redeveloped, so.
Well, I guess—I guess I'm talking about, like, area-wise, like, is—like, if you're just looking at all the properties as a whole, do a lot of them fall within that 50%, or do most of them fall into 25%? I'm just curious where—
Yeah, I would suppose the smaller parcels would fall within the 50% requirement, and the larger ones could fall within the 25%. So I—it's hard to say without knowing exactly the size of the parcel.
Okay. What's the other question, sir?
Ground Control to Rick. Do you hear us?
Yes, I hear you.
Rick, do you have questions?
I have no question at this time.
Okay. With that, we're going to go to public comment. Or is there any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the council to address these standards. Do you think it's helpful to go one by one? Or would anyone—
I think it's all-inclusive, so you can give me input on one by one, though. That would be helpful, I think. Because if you want to change anything here or add something to it, it'd be nice to go that direction.
I want to make a comment and see if my fellow council members agree on this at all. I'm looking at the requirements for onsite parking, and I'm trying to imagine some situations where we might want to go outside of these parameters. If there was a building downtown and a property owner bought the property next door and wanted to build essentially a standalone parking garage on that piece of property, and so it was going to satisfy their parking requirement, would this ordinance prevent them from doing Do you hear what I'm saying? I wonder if there's room for a catch-all that would allow a builder downtown to have an adjacent property that was 100% parking? Or—to even buy a piece of property, donate it to the city for the purpose of us building a parking garage on it, and then contributing to the spaces on that lot? Do we want to make this a little bit more flexible so that we could entertain that on a discretionary basis as a council?
I would say yes to that. If I understand your question right, and a property owner owns maybe two parcels next to each other, wants to build on one and put parking on the other one?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not sure that that would fit with this model exactly, but I think that I would want to enable that if somebody came in with an interesting project and one parcel made sense to do just parking, and one parcel made sense to do just commercial, but the numbers work out. Just a thought. I don't know how my other council members feel about that. Diane?
So I'd be interested if it was, say, housing, because I want to put a priority on housing. It'd have to be next door, and I'd also be interested—and this is just off the cuff, first time I've heard it—
Sure.
If there was a bit more than what was required, too, so we get some sort of upside there.
And that's where the discretionary part, I think, comes in—to play. It would have to be in our interest in order to do that, not in theirs.
I guess the challenge would be, in the district, we don't allow—at least in the limited parking zone, the smaller area—we don't allow additional curb cuts. So that would probably require a curb cut.
Maybe what I'm thinking about is outside of the downtown zone. So I—you're bringing me back to a good point, which is that this is limited to just those few blocks, and something along Delaware, for example, would not be in this district?
I was confused by the map. I think Councilmember Rodriguez has got something.
Eric?
Just a follow-up on Mayor Gothel's comment. If something came out of kind of left field, like, we're trying to set the ordinance for what's going to happen 99% of the time, but if something happened 1% of the time that we want to look at that doesn't fit with this, couldn't we, as a council, see that separately if we wanted to and amend anything as, like, a special use if we wanted to?
I would think we could put some language in here that would allow you to do so. Another option, if you're not comfortable with moving forward with the objective standards tonight, we could just move forward with the idea of letting them do the parking studies on each site, so it could bring back some more thoughts for you on the objective standards, too.
I don't mean to make this overly complicated, and I think Eric is right. Councilmember Rodriguez makes a good point that if we had a project that was interesting enough that we wanted to take a look at it, and we had to enable it by adopting different legislation, we always have the opportunity to do that in the past. With that having been said, I have no problem with the objective standards that you brought before us.
And so maybe you do need to add a little bit of wiggle room, so if we wanted to do that in the future. Is that what—you were saying?
I'd ask the city attorney if that would be the case.
I'd be happy to switch with you.
So I heard a couple of different concepts. One was, we'll just deal with that situation if it arises, if somebody presents something that sounds interesting, we could amend the code to address that at that time. The other concept is to introduce some wiggle room to the language right—into the ordinance right now.
Will we need to do the latter to—I mean, does it make a difference?
No, not really. Yeah. I mean, the only difference it might make as a practical matter is, for someone who has an interesting idea and wants to do something a little bit different that requires a code amendment, that could delay the processing of that project by a little bit, but not that much.
Thank you very much, Sean. With that, is there a motion?
So I'm just confused. For purposes of tonight, all we're talking about is that we're going to allow applicants to do a study—to—well, let me ask you, what are you asking us to vote on? Just the objective standards that are right here in front of us?
So both the objective standards that are shown on the screen here, but also to allow the parking study as well. Yes.
And we've already vacated our zoning code requirements at this moment in time? Has that happened? And we are now saying you can do a study, we'll determine how many parking spots you need, and then after that, we apply these objective standards? Is that where we are?
Right. So the purpose of what's before you tonight is the introduction of an ordinance that would make those code changes, to allow for the study if the applicant wants to, and then to apply these objective standards.
I can move that. I'll make a motion that we approve the suggested code amendments.
Second. We have motion and a second.
Are we in agreement that projects that are already in application would be exempt? Was that—I wasn't sure if that was a—if there was consensus there.
I prefer—I'd prefer to see a study. I mean, that's just my take on it, so we know what we're dealing with.
Okay.
But it's up to you guys.
Rick, any comment?
Based on—you know, it's hard for me to hear everything, I have to be frank. Based on everything I've read, I think that if we're approving as it's written, I'm okay with that. I also think, though, that we should look at grandfathering the project that does have an application submitted. I think that should be considered for a project that was submitted before we apply these standards.
And my understanding is that what Diane just said was, she agrees, she just wants to see a study first, right?
Yeah. Otherwise, what parking would apply?
There you go. So we have consensus?
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, for the particular project in question, I would recommend that they be grandfathered in. When they purchase the property, the municipal code, as it's written, would allow them to pay the parking in lieu fee. It's likely that they made their decision on the use of the property and the purchase based on that. So I would think for this particular instance, grandfathering them in to having the ability to pay the in lieu fee would be appropriate.
And—okay. So you're saying going above 50%?
No, no, no. How do we determine how many spots?
So right now, the code allows them just to pay the fee.
Right.
And so what's being proposed is to change the law so that, in certain circumstances, they have to provide some onsite. What's being recommended is that we amend the ordinance before you to allow for this grandfathering of projects that are already in the pipeline, have already have applications. You don't have to do that, but you could do that, and that's the request.
But they're within the limited parking zone, and the way we're doing it, they would be able to pay all of a parking in lieu fee instead of providing parking onsite, and my question is, how much is the parking in lieu fee? Isn't it a number of stalls?
They're in—they're outside the limited parking zone.
Okay.
We know the number that they would have to produce.
Okay.
And so we have the in lieu fee calculated, and what I'm suggesting is that—
I got it.
—based on where we—where they are in the process and where we are bringing this tonight, I would suggest that we allow them to continue with paying the in lieu fee and not being subjected to these new objective standards.
The ones in the second box here. You want to put them in the first. Okay.
I'm okay with that. You're okay with that? We're all—
As long as we know how many.
And Rick's already okay with that?
They're willing to—
And just to restate, I think what you're saying, they're already in the pipeline, they're there. It wouldn't be fair to, say, charge them the higher rate of the space and the higher number of—of—of demand spaces, number of spaces?
No. What I'm saying is, is that it's—it's difficult at this point to have them produce 50% of their parking onsite, given where they are.
The old standard. Old standard, period, they're grandfathered in.
They get the right to pay, is all he's saying. It doesn't have anything to do with the number of spaces.
That's correct.
It's just that they get the right to pay, because that's how they bought the property, was with the right to pay.
That's correct.
Whatever that fee is.
And I appreciate the—
And what is that fee?
The clarity that we brought to that.
$5,000.
It sounds like the motion would be to introduce the ordinance as written, however amended, to provide for that grandfathering in for projects that have complete applications submitted.
Correct.
Correct, correct, correct. If I may just say, they do—they have put forward a plan to provide some parking on the site. It's not that they're paying all of it, but they just can't meet that 50% requirement.
Understood. Thank you, Brad.
So they'll give some. They'll give us some. Okay. Great. I'm okay with that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Pappan, we have a second from Councilmember Rodriguez, we have a second second from Councilmember Bonilla. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Brad, thank you very much for that presentation. And pinch hitting for Sue Ellen. Good work. Speaking of pinch hitters, City Manager, would you like to give a presentation on proposed enhanced revenue measures?
Yes. So, good evening, Mayor Gothel, members of the council. The item before you is the consideration of doing some polling on enhanced tax revenue measures. Whoops, I got started early. Next slide. Okay. So we've come to council on three different occasions for study sessions to—starting with an entire suite of every potential revenue enhancement that we could identify, and over those three study sessions have whittled down the considerations to the transient occupancy tax, the business license tax, and the property transfer tax. So transient occupancy tax, we're currently at 12%, 10% of which goes into our general fund, 2% goes to capital projects. In November of 2018, six cities in San Mateo County put TOT measures on the ballot, all of them passed. It set the rate within the county to between 12 and 14%. Currently, there are three cities at 14%, and there are another three, including ourselves, that are considering moving to 14% on the 2020 ballot. If we move to 14%, it would be about another $1.4 million in annual revenue to the general fund, or, yeah, to the general fund. And then that would equate to about $4 per room night to the hotel guests. So the business license tax is another consideration. Those fees were last updated in 1977. 70% of our businesses pay based on gross receipts, the other 30%, we have certain business categories carved out that pay a flat fee, so for instance, contractors pay a flat fee. But the majority of our business license tax revenue comes from gross receipts. And so trying to level an increase in business license tax with what a TOT increase would achieve of 1.4 million, we would need to increase the business license tax by about 25% across the board. And so for our small businesses, which we define as businesses that are gross receipts of $100,000 or less a year, it'd be about $14 annually per business. For businesses, our larger businesses of over $100,000 of gross receipts, it'd be about $665 annually for the business license tax. And then finally, the property transfer tax. As a charter city, we're allowed to charge the property transfer tax, and our current rate is half a percent of the sale value. Other cities—other charter cities in the Bay Area have moved to tiering the rate, so the higher the transaction amount, the higher the tax rate is. So as an example, if we set our tier at $5 million and kept the half a percent rate for sales under $5 million, but then charged a percent for sales of $5 million or greater, that would be about 3% of our total transaction volume, based on 2018-19 data, and it would generate about $4.6 million annually in revenue. It would cost about $157,000 per transaction on those transactions above $5 million. So just in summary, transient occupancy tax, increasing it by 2% from 12% to 14% would bring in additional $1.4 million in revenue and cost about $4 per room night. Business license tax, to achieve that same $1.4 million would require an increase of about 25%, and so for small businesses, on average, of about $14, and for larger businesses, on average, of $665. And then the transfer tax, if you tiered it and charged 1% as opposed to the half percent for anything above— percent for anything above $5 million, it would bring in about $4.6 million annually or about $157,000 per transaction over $5 million. So, a few considerations for the 2020 ballot. We do expect that to be crowded with tax measures. Split role has qualified, and that's a property tax measure. There's an additional 1% sales tax. That's a transportation initiative by MTC. And there's also a potential 1/8 cent sales tax initiative by Caltrain. So, a lot of tax measures currently considered for the ballot. In talking with our polling consultant, we believe our best opportunity is to have one ballot measure versus multiple tax measures on, on the ballot. And transient occupancy tax is the one that has no direct impact to San Mateo residents. So, what I would advise is that we move forward with transient occupancy tax and consider other options for future elections. So, and by moving forward, what I mean is simply going to the next step, which would be to conduct some statistically valid surveying on our, our potential voter's appetite for increasing the transient occupancy tax to 14%. And if council were to provide that direction, we would start to poll in March or April. We'd come back to council with the resents, with the results in April or May, and then it would come to council in July for a final decision on whether to put it onto the 2020, 2020 November ballot. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Let's start with questions. Councilmember Pappan, do you have any questions?
I just want to, I'd just like to leave out the slide, if we can, the one that shows how much each proposal brings in.
1.4, 1.4, and 5.6.
4.6.
4.6.
But I wish it were 5.6. Okay, I just want to leave that. Thank you. That's it for me.
Great. Councilmember Lee?
I, I guess I was just curious about the cost of polling. And, you know, is, if, is it a significant cost and, and what the time turnaround, the turnaround time for it is?
The, the cost for the polling would be about $26,000. The turnaround's pretty quick. We've actually, we're generally ready to go on a TOT polling survey. It's a pretty straightforward survey, so we're ready to go, could get it turned around pretty quickly. As of last Tuesday, the thought was we would go right out, like, as in start tomorrow. But we were talking about, you know, waiting to see how things went with, you know, the health crisis. And so, I'll have to follow up with our polling consultant to determine, do we want to sit on this for a while and do it in April? But the turnaround's pretty quick. And again, it's pretty straightforward, so the results are not difficult to analyze and then bring back to council. So, we do think, given the fact that we need just to have this ready for a decision in July, we think we're okay from a time perspective.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
When, I agree with, with everything you said about the transit, transient occupancy tax. Does it make sense while we're, we're, we're doing some polling to ask anything else? Or is it just better to also? I understand it's best to focus on one tax in November, but, but while we're out there, should, did you look into asking other questions?
Yeah, definitely. We, we asked the question, you know, should we poll on two different tax measures to see how they go? And the, the consultant recommended that if we were to want to poll on two, that we actually split the polling and do 300 sample one and 300 sample with others, because he said in his experience that once you get to that second one, you start, you start getting people who are losing interest in, in the tax measures. And so, it can skew your results.
Makes sense. And one minor question, with the property transfer tax and the two tiers, is the second tier, is, is the second tier 0.5% on everything up until that? Or is it just it triggers at one, one or the other?
We could, we could structure it however we wanted. The intent and the dollars that we're showing here is that it's all transactions above $5 million get charged the higher rate. So, it would be on the first $5 million and everything above it.
Got it.
That's how it's structured, but we could, we could do it however we wanted.
Okay. Thanks. That's all the questions. Councilmember Benia, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Right now.
Okay, thanks, Rick. My questions, you already answered the question about delaying the polling. Maybe a little bit makes sense till we're further through this current crisis, people have more time. I have a question for Patrice. Do you recall approximately how much it costs to put a ballot measure like this on, especially one that is going to have so many voters?
Actually, we, we recognize a little bit of savings when there, when it's split among so many voters. It doesn't, wasn't as high. The last election we had, where we had ballot measures on, we had an extremely high tab, and it was because there was so, it was just us and two other jurisdictions.
We were going to even your elections. Everybody else had already gone to even your election, so it was just us. Ballpark, can you?
I'm sorry, I don't have a ballpark right now.
Okay.
I could get that, too.
It was some fraction of a dollar per voter or something like that?
It's, it's a dollar amount per registered voter. We can ask the county elections department to give us a guesstimate on that.
I just remember it being somewhere between $75,000 and, I, I don't remember.
That's, that's a, a prior elections.
Yeah.
The costs have been going up. There's more, it, the changes in the wind right now, because they're also doing the CRV.
And especially since Mark Church likes to print them so many times, make those amendments.
So, we've got a lot of changes happening right now and additional publications we have to do. So, if, with your permission, I'll find out that information and get it to you.
Great. I just, I remember it being a much more significant number than the polling.
It was three times as much the last election.
There you go. And Drew, you left off the jurisdictions that charge more than 14%. How many? There's at least two jurisdictions that I can think of that are already above 14%, right?
There's only one that I'm aware of in San Mateo and Santa Clara County. It's Palo Alto that charges 15 and 1/2%.
Okay.
No one else in, in San Mateo is above 14.
San Francisco and Oakland? Do you know where they're at?
Uh, I, I don't.
Okay.
I don't. We, we contemplated also polling for 15, but based on where we are in the market, and especially with our, our neighbors to the north, Burlingame being, still being 12, felt like 14 was about as high as we could go.
And I think we all agree, we'd much rather build more hotels in order to generate the additional revenue as much as raising this-
I would concur.
Will help. We should be encouraging and trying to build more hotels. With that having been said, those are all the questions going to public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during public comment at this period? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for direction-
Yes.
To poll on the one item.
TOT.
TOT. TOT, TOT, TOT. Rick, do you concur?
I agree.
Thank you. You have everything you need from us, Drew? I do, thank you. Thank you very much. Now, my recollection is that the next item on our agenda is the proclamation of a local health emergency, item number 10. Is there a presentation for this item?
Yes, I have a very brief presentation.
Thank you, Drew.
So, yes, as noted, the item is the proclamation of a local health emergency. Just by way of background, the state of California and the county of San Mateo have issued emergency declarations regarding the COVID-19 epidemic. Our municipal code, section 2.78.030, also allows the Director of Emergency Services, which is me as the City Manager, to request council to proclaim an emergency. And so, that's the action we're asking for tonight. The proclaiming of a local emergency provides the Director of Emergency Services just greater latitude to obtain supplies and equipment to, to address the emergency. And one of the big things that we're doing right now, which is mobilize our, our workforce to address the issues going on. It could also strengthen our eligibility for cost recovery for our, our response efforts. So, that's why I'm, I'm here requesting that council proclaim a local health emergency. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Any questions? Councilmember Pappan? Councilmember, any questions? Councilmember Lee?
No questions.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Benia?
Not now.
Okay. At this time, I just think it's worth pointing out the additional authority that this gives you as the City Manager, as the Director of Emergency Services, to make any necessary decisions and regulations. This is a robust set of powers that you need in order to face this emergency and to represent all of us. Some of the actions that you might take would have to come back to the council-
Yes.
-at the earliest possible convenience. So, it was my suggestion, I don't know if you've had any more time to think about this, that based on the additional authority and giving you the opportunity to come back to the council on a regular basis, that we, there's three weeks between now and the next council meeting. This is a rapidly evolving situation. I would propose to my fellow council members that we meet every Monday night at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers to have a special meeting. That would be two additional special meetings next Monday and the Monday after that. And then we have our regularly scheduled meeting on April 6th. Is that right? So, I'll be proposing that to the council after this. That having been said, any other questions? I'll go out to public comment. Any public comment at this time? Seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for a vote on the resolution to proclaim a local health emergency related to the 2019 novel coronavirus. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Rick.
I'll second.
We have a second from Councilmember Pappan. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Those are all the items on our agenda. I'd like to address the concept of having special meetings on the next two Mondays. How does the council feel about that? To give regular updates, it also gives us a forum to educate the public on what has been happening and to do it in a way that would be publicized. It would be on television, it would be streamed. It, it gives us a regular chance to update the public and for you to report to us, which is one of the requirements of the code.
Right. So, just, just to confirm the intent of the, the regular meetings, one, one intent would be to agendize any item that, any action that I took that required council confirmation. And then, two, to provide an update on changes in the status and changes in city operations as a result of the evolving situation. Is that, that correct?
That's my proposal, and I'm, I'm open to any other ideas.
I just have a question. What do you think of that idea? Will it help you?
I, I think it will. I don't think we can communicate enough about this. And so, this will give us just another forum to, to provide updates to our community on, on what we're doing and how we're responding to this. So, I think it's a pretty good bang for the buck overall in terms of our time commitment in, in being able to communicate with the community.
Rick, you have comments? Rick, do you have comments?
Yes. I think that I'm in favor of the two special meetings to make sure we get all, all of this tied up and done correctly. I am fully supportive.
Great. Motion then? Or do we need to make a motion or just give direction to schedule those two meetings? Direction. So, we've spoken, we're asking for those meetings. Any objection to that? I don't see any. So, we're at the, we've covered all of the agenda items for tonight. We're at the point of reports and announcements. I'd like to start off with an announcement. Just a few minutes ago, Governor Newsom issued an executive order to protect renters and homeowners during the COVID pandemic. This came out during our meeting, and the executive order declares that no tenant will be evicted during this COVID crisis. And the full language of the executive order can be found on the governor's website. One thing to point out, I think we've all been contacted by the small business community in San Mateo, and it would be my desire that we not allow small businesses, especially restaurants that are so fragile in this difficult time, to be evicted because, essentially because of COVID-19. Is there a desire by the council, is there an appetite to come back at a special meeting sooner than later to discuss a, a possible ordinance to protect small businesses and restaurants from eviction?
Yes. Yes, I'm in favor of that.
Sorry, Rick, we didn't hear you. Could you say that again?
I say yes, I'm in favor of that meeting.
Thank you, Rick.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're saying all small businesses, not just restaurants?
Yes. Any comments on that?
I think, I think it's definitely worth exploring, and, and I think it'll, it'll give us some time to look over Governor Newsom's new order, because it, it actually could apply to commercial businesses potentially.
Okay.
So, we'll see.
So, I would propose, I, I really appreciate that the governor acted. It was something that was weighing on me and that we received many, many emails about. It's important to me that people be able to sleep tonight, not having to worry about where they're going to sleep tomorrow. So, the fact that tenants are protected in their units and that nobody's going to have to worry about moving on top of everything else is a very important action. But I do think that our small business community needs to be addressed as well. I would propose that we give our city attorney and ourselves a little bit more time to do that research and actually put that on our special, as an agenda item, on our special meeting next Monday. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's unanimous. Is that all right? Yes, City Manager? Feeling more powerful over there right now? You're, you're empowered to, to do the will of the people and, and to protect all of us during these difficult times. I, I am very proud of the governor for the eviction moratorium. Any reports and announcements from anybody?
I'd just like to-
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Say one thing. I, I know we'll probably each want to make a little bit of comment about what's been going on, but if I could just urge the public to continue with the two Cs, common sense and compassion. That's kind of where I'm coming from, without being too wordy.
Excellent. Wow. And you, you're gonna give us back the rest of the, of the time?
I have a passion for brevity.
I love that. Rick, are you asking to go next?
Yes, please. Also, I would like to ask that everybody, every member of the public, please be considerate of all the others who are simply trying to protect themselves when we're at the store, especially, I was there today at Costco. We need to be careful to maintain that social distancing. It seems to be very difficult for some people. I want us all to be considerate, though, of everybody's health needs. So, that, and I have another one. I mailed, I sent everybody information regarding Seamless Bay Area, and I wanted to find out if everybody's had a chance to look at that and if we would be interested in having that brought back for a future look on the agenda.
I, I am interested.
I am, too.
Yes, so I think we can direct, is, would this be for a study session?
I think so, Rick.
Okay.
They have a, they have a proposal for you to adopt, but I think we should probably study it for, I don't know, what do you want to do?
Mr. City Manager, recognizing that we're probably not doing study sessions in the immediate future, could we add Seamless Bay Area to a future study sess, study session agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Fair enough. I think you have direction from the council to do that. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Rick, you had mentioned the gun buyback program last, last week, and I think I cut you short. Did you want to bring that up again?
The gun buyback program?
Yes. I apologize for cutting you off at our last meeting.
Yes, yes, thank you. The group that does the gun buyback through the county is interested in coming to present to us so that we're, we're aware of their successes and their activities. They are planning another gun buyback, and I do believe they'll ask us to participate. I think it's comparatively a nominal amount they're going to ask for, so I would simply ask that we allow them to come and present.
Is there any objection to that by any council member?
Just allowing them to present, not, how can- Just allowing them to present, not helping?
We're not voting on the money tonight.
I guess my question is, did we want to hear maybe from the police as well on it? I mean, or you just want to hear from the, what are your thoughts, Rick?
Yeah, no, I think, I would welcome them to come and talk to us, and in between now and then, we can talk to the police and we can do other research and talk to Drew about how to address this. So, I'm happy to have them come and give a short presentation to us, whether we do it during public comment or before the meeting or whenever. So I'll work with you, Rick, to figure out a meeting when they can be on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Eric, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I'll just say a couple words on this current crisis we're in. You know, I've been, like most everybody here, most likely just kind of stuck at home working and trying to keep connected to members of the community via different ways, and a lot of it is through Nextdoor, just seeing what's going on, what people are talking about. And I think that, one thing that I think is very important to keep in mind, and this touches a little bit on what councilwoman Happin said, is that, you know, if we, as a, well, first off, everything, these difficult times for our city are going to make us stronger, and we're going to get through this. That's the first thing that I wanted to say. But I think that it's important for those of you watching at home, and you're, when you're on Nextdoor and you have the free time to be commenting on this or that, and you have a safe shelter that you can live and you're not having to worry about being evicted or you're not having to worry about anything else, you are really one of the lucky ones. And I think it's really important that we take this time to realize just how lucky we are as a community, lucky to live in a city like San Mateo. So that's all I had to say on that. And I also, I'm assuming we're gonna say maybe a couple words on the passing of...
Yes, we will. We'll get there. Thank you. So, yes, city manager?
If I could, I would like at some point to comment on the order that was issued today and the changes it's made to our operation.
Let's do that now.
Okay, thank you. So as you're aware, there was a shelter in place ordered today by the county health officer, along with county health officers of five other counties in the Bay Area. I want to assure the public that essential services will continue to be provided, police services, fire services, wastewater treatment plant, and the maintenance of critical infrastructure will go on, will continue to go as normal. Other operations will occur, for example, public construction projects will continue to move forward, housing projects will continue to move forward, we are adjusting our operations to accommodate those things. There are many other areas of the city operation that will be slowed down considerably as a result of this, as we are doing what the order calls for, which is, you know, reconsidering our nonessential services. So there will be a slowdown in some areas, but critical public services will be maintained during this time.
Great. Thank you, Drew. I have an important message regarding this state of emergency that we have declared. I'm very proud that we took this important step to declare the emergency, and it gives our city manager important emergency powers to exercise to keep us all safe. For those who are at home who are watching this, asking yourselves, is this serious? The answer is yes. This is very serious. It is a matter of life and death, and we do expect to see more cases. This is a highly contagious virus. Should you be afraid? And the answer to that is no. You, all of you who are at home, need to talk to your kids about the fact that for most people, if you contract the virus, the symptoms are mild. It is not posing a serious health risk to children, and it's, for the most part, not posing a serious health risk to healthy adults. We do need to take special care to our older population, and those people who either have a compromised immune system or who are older adults need to take steps for their own protection. The immediate health crisis can be addressed by each of us by staying home. We can all be heroes by staying home. That is what we can do. That is what we're being asked to do, is to stay home, sit on your couch, and by doing that, you are helping us to flatten the curve. And flattening the curve means that the percentage of people who come down ill and need to go to an emergency room will be far less, and our public health, our health system will not be overwhelmed in the immediate term. And those things are so important for us in order to address this public health crisis. For anyone who is experiencing symptoms, if you are experiencing symptoms, call one of the hotlines and make an appointment. There are places that you can be tested in a drive-through facility, one of those is the San Mateo County Event Center, and one of those is the Stanford Hospital. We have enough kits, but we are only recommending that people get tested if they are showing symptoms. And do not call 911 unless it is an emergency. In most cases, people who have mild symptoms are going to be tested and then asked to go home and continue to monitor themselves. Many people have asked me, what else can I do? What else can I do? And I think one of the things that we can all do is be thankful for the emergency workers, those people who are out there who still have to perform their job. Police officers, firefighters, people out at, working at the sewer and wastewater treatment plant, they are working for us. And if there's anything you can do, support them, support their families. There are measures that are being taken to also help people with the economic impacts. First of all, I mentioned the eviction moratorium that was passed by Governor Newsom. That eviction moratorium is critical so that people don't go to sleep at night worrying about whether they're going to have a roof over their heads tomorrow. We are going to address the small business moratorium as well because they have been mandated in many cases to close their doors, and so we need to support them. And SAMCITA as an organization is helping organizations to see what resources are available to them. Those people who have lost their jobs because of COVID are, do have expedited unemployment relief available to them through the state. Our district attorney has mentioned that price gouging or illegal evictions will be prosecuted to the full extent of the law, and I guarantee you, I will make sure of it in San Mateo. Those people who are trying to take advantage and exploit people during this important time, they will be prosecuted to the full extent of the law. I want to emphasize that the essential services will be open for people. Grocery stores will be open, you will have access to food, there will be food on the shelves, and you don't need to rush out to the store tonight. In fact, you're probably endangering yourself and others if you rush to the store right now. Wait until you need to replenish your supplies. Pharmacies will also be open. You don't need to rush out to your local pharmacy, they will stay open and protect you. They are some of our emergency necessary workers who are out there for all of us. The best thing you can do is stay home. Netflix and chill, that's one way that we can all be patriotic. Netflix and chill. Or quarantine and chill, I hear some people calling it. So, do your best. Be a hero by staying at home and not passing this disease along. I have a message to all Samiteans, please, God bless you, God bless your families. Please make me proud, San Mateo. Make me proud.
Mr. Mayor?
At this time, Rick, I was going to adjourn in honor of our friend, our dear friend, Greg St. Clair. Did you have something else you wanted to say, though, Rick, before I get to that?
I just want to add something, just a little bit lighter. Everybody knows I'm at home tonight. Clearly, I am observing all of the recommendations that have been made, but also for me personally, very importantly, in the end of June will be my 67th birthday, so it's important that we protect, that I protect myself, but we be considerate of the older folks who need to have some special provisions. So, thank you all for supporting me in this, and please, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Rick.
Can I add to that?
Please.
It's very eerie to be sitting in chambers with the seats taped up and only 14 people allowed to sit here, with everyone doing their best to stay home, which is great. I wanted to add on to what you were saying, Councilmember Bonilla, about our seniors because we are, many of us in this room, we are very privileged to benefit from good health, and because of the incubation period, and in many cases, people being asymptomatic and positive, we believe, the transmission rates can really get out of control very quickly. And so, I do believe that this is the task of our generation to protect our seniors and our elders. These are the people that have paved the way for us, and it's our debt to pay back to them, to protect them. And so, it might not be much to sit at home, but know that you're saving a life, and that is, that is no small thing. And having worked in China during the HIV crisis and seeing people who could not be helped, and seeing what a pandemic looks like when it's an inevitable death sentence, this is truly one of those times where we can, we can make a huge difference, and the call to action is really not that much.
I think that was extremely well said. I do want to clarify your last point, that the death sentence had to do with HIV when it was going untreated in China.
Correct.
Okay. It's not that COVID-19 is a death sentence, it is not. It is treatable so long as we don't overwhelm our healthcare system.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying.
No problem. At this time, I want to adjourn in memory of our dear friend and a commissioner who served San Mateo extremely well for decades. He served as a realtor to our community, he served as an indelible community member who was present at nearly everything. He served on the San Mateo United Homeowners Association Board representing his neighborhood, he served as a commissioner to the city. In 2016, when the Super Bowl was in San Mateo, Greg was an extreme help to me because we were hosting the Wounded Warrior football game up at CSM. We were celebrating our veterans who had been wounded in battle and who were participating in this game, in this football game. Snoop played in the football game, there were lots of NFL players who played in this football game, and Greg was out there because of his dad, Bob St. Clair, who is the former supervisor of San Mateo and a Hall of Famer, one of our most celebrated 49ers, who was beloved by the entire county of San Mateo. We are remembering Greg and his life, and I'm remembering him personally and what a true, true friend he was to me and to my daughters and to my family. Our thoughts and our prayers go out to his three sons, Cody, Kyle, and Gabe, and all of his family members. Tonight, Greg has been united, reunited with Ginger, and he gets to see his old dad, Bob. God bless you, Greg. Please give us a moment of silence. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.
You're watching the San Mateo City Channel. San Mateo, a city of tradition and vision.